Thank you, appreciate it. On, uh, I believe, uh... In the United States of America, and it's a, uh, stance under that in this so... Item number three, now... We're going to, uh, number eight, we've all carried six thirty, number one, chapter one of the... Section nine seven, I have some of them, no, from that section nine seven, in that definition, parking, yes, Mr. Parkin, nine second, two A, B, from that regulation for that. Well, by the way, two, one, two, 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 back end, active, parking, section, one twelve, six thirty, A, B, from that offering, parking, part. Comments, government, fire, and...
Darrell Cook, South Walnut Street. I asked the computer, why do pedestrians get struck? I saw eight causes. Number three, left-hand turn. Number four, electronics. Five, quiet cars. Six, dark clothes. Seven, alcohol. Thank you.
Yeah, item one here is, uh, basically, we want to schedule a hearing to adopt the Westchester Borough Transportation Committee. This is actually the Transportation Advisory Committee. We've been talking about this for several months. It's a forward-looking and actually present, um, sort of education and awareness of what transpa... what transportation we currently have available to Westchester residents and also people coming in and out of Westchester and the surrounding area. So that's what this is. It was a committee recommendation to approve this with two, two oh.
I just, I just have one question, and it's the, um, the, the difference between this committee, the Transportation Committee, and the Railroad Restoration Committee, because this ordinance or change also mentions rail.
I think what we're, what the findings we would learn out of this committee, because it's multimodal, so it would include rail, it would include circulation, it would include paths which could be walking, biking, um, potentially airport transportation, um, which would include recommendations for rail. The reason why we, uh, recommended, uh, it's a bigger in scope, I guess I would, I would say, is, um, it's much broader. Rail restoration is very laser-focused on, on just that aspect of transportation in Westchester and inner county. And, let's start right before, before you ask another question. We agreed that we would have a liaison between both committees so that we understood actions, thoughts, questions, communication was flowing back and forth between both.
Versus folding one into the other?
For now. Uh, yeah, so, um, so that was, um, are there any other questions?
I, I just want to add that public transportation in general, including buses and shuttles, is also a significant part of this committee. We have services that are available already, but people are unaware of them, and I think that's, you know, this is a much broader scope than the rail restoration project.
I, I think the one thing that we have to look at with the development coming in and the census that I don't believe was accurate, that's what, a thousand new people potentially in the borough, plus the census that missed potentially up to 2,000 people. So, we have to figure out ways in which people can have adequate transportation to and from Westchester and within the borough. That's why I, I think it's a good thing.
No? Yeah, so, okay, great. Now I forgot what I was gonna say. Thanks a lot, Brian. Gone. Okay, any other comments?
I, just for clarification, I, I do think the committee is good, I just think the two are related and could be folded into one, which is, which was the, the intent of my question.
Now I remember what it was. I mean, sometimes just getting across town, just by car, takes 10 minutes. I'd much rather have a bike if, uh, you know, there were safe, easy way to get there and then also store my bike. So, anyway, I think it's a good move, and I'm looking forward to some of their recommendations. Okay. Next item.
Yes, next item is, uh, item number, uh, A two, motion to discuss amendments to Borough Council Rules and Procedures.
Just to clarify, did council move that item to consent?
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no problem.
Agreement on moving this to consent?
Got it.
Thank you.
Yes. Next item is to discuss amendments to Borough Council Rules and Procedures. These are, these are our rules, these are not in the, in the Borough Code specifically spelled out, um, or the, uh, uh, why am I going blank?
Robert's Rules of Order.
Yes, so what we're, what we've essentially done is we've modified, and I believe that the last time we looked at, well, maybe not looked at it, but the last time we amended it was sometime in the nineties. So it was, it was a good opportunity to take a fresh look. A lot of what we did with the, uh, Rules and Procedures was to, um, get up to compliance with, uh, General Assembly, um, in terms of how we amend agendas and how we, um, and, and what we're allowed to amend in terms of, um, uh, the implications, in terms of the financial implications. So, um, this was another one that was a committee recommendation to, two zero, and we, uh, we suggest that we also move this to, um, to the, uh, um, yeah, to the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, council.
I do think we do need just a little more time to make sure we've got the words right and make sure it comports with Act sixty-five. We haven't done our diligence on our end and make sure that's okay. So, if there's comments from council that, in, in addition to or extra to compliance with Act sixty-five, I'd be curious to hear them now, and maybe we can bring this back through committee next month so that we, we, I've, I haven't, it's been, you know, the, the last week has been crazy. So we just haven't been able to, um, or personally, I haven't been able to pin this down and make sure we're on target with Act sixty-five. So I'd hate to adopt something and then ask you to change a word here or there.
So, our motion is to draft the amendment.
Our motion would be to, to, I think it's just a discussion item where then we could send it back to the act committee, and I should have led with, I really thank you, Dana, for taking one for the team and lead, leading this. She grabbed the old document, converted it, made, made an attempt at, uh, at these changes, but I want to make sure she has peer review from, from me and the solicitor before you all take action on the item, and it's just not ripe right now.
Yeah, the, the, the one thing that I did pick up on, Mr. Metric, was, um, it's, it, we mentioned Act sixty-five, but it's Title sixty-five, so there, there could be some just subtle things.
The statute law, right, is modified?
Yep. I, I just want to make sure that we're referencing the right pieces.
Okay, so we're moving this back to, to committee. Thank you. Parking Committee.
We have one thing, I was, I want to apologize for not being here last week, but, um, thank you for making up for it. This is pretty simple, there's a motion to reject the bids for the bicentennial garage surface treatment, not because we don't want it done, but because the lowest bidder and the second lowest bidder were ages apart, and we just want to make sure that what we are bidding on is actually what they are bidding on, and what we are asking for bids on is what they are bidding on, and that everything is clearly understood before we accept anything to move forward. So that was two oh.
Any public questions or comments? Okay, looks like we move that to consent. Public Works Committee. Uh, Mr. Flynn is not here, so, um, I was there unless, I think you were also present?
Yeah, I was present, um, Mr. Macaro was, was not, uh, so I'll go ahead and take these. The, uh, the first item, C one, um, we've been discussing for probably the last couple committee meetings, um, better, better trash management practices, more so specifically in, in this motion here, which we're gonna table, but I want to spend a few minutes just talking about, um, containment. And, um, the language that we drafted around trash containment was, I, I don't remember how long ago it was, but it's another one that we kind of needed to dust off, look at it again. Since we drafted language specifically around dumpsters and fences around commercial trash, we have had a proliferation of what's called toters, which are small, little mini dumpsters, you've seen them, the green cans, they have lids on them. We don't have any place in our, our code currently that addresses toters and what we should do with them if there are many of them, or if there should be a dumpster instead of a toter. So, um, we've had a few conversations, I think we have some good ideas, and we've also had some input from Don Edwards, our Public Works Director, and also, we have met with Scott Zuckin, uh, Sheila, Bernie and I have, and we have some suggestions, but I don't think we're quite ready yet to, um, to draft a, you know, a, um, an amendment to Chapter sixty-two, um, and there may be other amendments that we would also take a look at in the process too. So I want to table this item, um, give us a little bit more time, um, and meet with our solicitor, and, uh, see if we can tighten this up a little bit before we take it to...
So it looks like Bill has some images up here, maybe help you describe to public what we're, what we're talking about, seems pretty self-evident, and these are, this is for private trash, trash collection, not Borough Trash Collection.
That is correct, so we're, private trash collection per residence is limited to two cans and two bags, um, although I've heard two cans and four bags, but I think it's two cans and two bags, and obviously, this doesn't fit into that picture. This isn't the only, um, I mean, this is a great example, because it's probably the, the most extreme example, but there are plenty of other opportunities along, in the borough where we have seen, um, just like I said, a proliferation of these toters and, and no containment, and I don't think that the, um, that the, uh, the residents or, um, that, you know, the, the folks that are leasing a lot of these buildings even know what to do with them or where to put them. And so, I think we should also take a look at that as well.
Comments, questions? Any public comments or questions? Okay, thank you, sounds like we'll table this to, uh, next month's committee meeting. Number two.
Okay, C two, motion to approve resolution to the sewer planning module for two fifty East Market Street. This is something that we've also discussed, but apparently we discussed it in the wrong order, so we brought it back up in committee, um, and we, uh, we, um, this was a, a committee recommendation to approve the resolution for the new sewer planning module for this large new building that's going in. So, yeah, we'd like to move this to consent agenda.
Comments, questions? Any public comments? Okay, thank you, we will move this to consent. Public Safety, Events and Quality of Life Committee.
Yes, um, D one is, uh, motion to approve the Domestic Violence Center of Chester County Purple Ribbon Campaign in October. We've done this every year, they hang purple ribbons around the lampposts throughout, uh, the downtown town center. Recommendation was three zero.
Any comments, questions? Public comments or questions? Okay, we will, uh, move that to consent.
Okay.
Item two.
D two is the Civil Service Commission's, um, updated rules and regulations, what was attached in the, uh, amendment, I'm sorry, what was attached to the agenda last week did not include the red lines, so we asked the committee to update the document so that we could actually see the changes, and that is now attached to the agenda. So, I would like to put this on discussion for next week so we can review them, but, sure.
Sure, I think, um, um, my name's David McMahan, I'm the solicitor for the Civil Service Commission, and just very briefly, the reason for the amendments, I've been the solicitor for about two years, the last time these were amended were twenty sixteen, and since that time, there have been a number of changes to the model rules, and I'm kind of, kind of breaking into three reasons why the commission has recommended the changes. Number one, uh, there have been a number of amendments, um, to the model, um, having to do with the role of three, what's needed for a quorum, ADA requirements, discrimination or non-discrimination. Second, some of the changes have to do with language that needed to be updated and changed to be more consistent, and then three, there were some inconsistencies or, um, things that weren't clear. For example, um, the testing procedures for an officer, the physical test and the psychiatric examination and so forth, was unclear whether that applied to, uh, police chief, which my, my, um, review was it didn't, but we wanted to clarify that. So these changes are really to try to become consistent with some of the amendments that have happened statewide as well, which is kind of update things that have happened in the past, uh, eight years since they were last adopted. So that, that was really the purpose that the, uh, commission, um, agreed, three, uh, zero to the changes, also has to do with the appointment of, um, alternates. I think the three prior members of the commission were on for many, many, many years, as was my predecessor, so there was a need to have, um, a vehicle, to have, uh, alternates in, in case a commission member couldn't make it. So, that's really, I'm happy to answer questions, but that, in a nutshell, is the genesis and reason for the changes.
Yeah, thank you for providing the, um, the redlined, uh, version, there, I don't think there was a page that wasn't redlined, so they're pretty significant, um, which is why I think, you know, we need some time to review them. I do, anyway.
Well, I can tell you, some of the changes were, if we made one change within a paragraph, we just redlined the whole thing, so it's not completely redone, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Okay, looks like we will move this to next month's committee. Smart Earth.
Okay, so, uh, first up is discussing the edits that were made to the short-term rental, Chapter one twelve zoning amendment, and Chapter sixty-six property maintenance code. If you recall, last month, we, we had some call-outs and some things that we wanted to just look at one more time, and so Kristen has done that. Uh, I'm gonna let you, Kristen, just talk to them, and then we can...
Sure, so after the public hearing, was given some guidance on some substantive changes to the ordinance, um, the main three changes are, the first, the draft that was presented at the hearing in August, allowed short-term rentals in the town center district by conditional use approval of Borough Council. This version amends that to allow short-term rentals in the town center district by special exception approval, which is the same burden, but it's granted by the zoning hearing board after a public hearing process, not Borough Council. The second major change was to have, take out the thousand-foot separation distance requirement, so the draft that went to the ordinance said that you, in the town center, you could have short-term rentals, but they couldn't be within a thousand feet of another dwelling uses short-term rental. This version removes that section and instead establishes that there's a maximum number of twenty that would be permitted in the town center, and with that came some additional language that was necessary because there's requirements under the state law, when a zoning application is received by the borough, the Borough zoning hearing board must hold that hearing within sixty days. So I was concerned about if you got to the cap of having twenty short-term rentals be approved through the special exception process, what happens when you get application number twenty-one? So there's language that we added to address that situation. Basically, you're gonna be keeping a list of properties that receive zoning approval to operate a short-term rental, and then they have a certain amount of time to get their rental license for the short-term rental. If that occurs, then, and they're, one of the first twenty, you know, they can continue to operate that until such time as they discontinue that or don't continue to get their annual permit, if a twenty-first application came in, the borough would be keeping a waiting list, and as maybe one of the one twenty, one of the twenties that was approved wants to no longer do it, or doesn't get their rental permit license, then the twenty-first application will receive a notification that they, if they are still interested, they have the opportunity to go and process their zoning application. So that language came in there. The other thing, the other changes are just because we changed it to special exception, and then the other point was just, in any zoning ordinance, you really should try to articulate what council's rational planning purposes. So we, I did work with Tom Cametta to try to come up with some language that I felt was, that things that I've heard over the years as we've been working on this ordinance as what you're trying to achieve by specifically regulating it, but limiting, limiting it to the town center, limiting it to a special exception process, and limiting it to a maximum cap of twenty. So those are the three main changes, adding planning purpose statements, changing it to be special exception, eliminating thousand-foot separation, and in place putting a cap of twenty.
Also, we added the safety paragraph in there, too.
Well, that's in the property maintenance one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this is just the zoning change, this is the zoning amendment. Excuse me, the property maintenance ordinance, we did not, we tabled that hearing, we did not actually open that hearing because we, council wasn't moving forward with adoption of the zoning amendment in August, and one of the things that came up, um, when I was reviewing other example ordinances where this issue has been regulated, um, there was some language that I liked, and also addressed some concerns raised by people at the hearing about, you know, minimum standards. I do want to say that we did meet, Sally and I and, and Sean, did meet with the code official, who understands the certification process and understands when a long-term rental is inspected and what needs to be inspected, and that really varies depending upon where the dwelling, what kind of dwelling it is, whether it's single-family dwelling, a detached dwelling, an attached dwelling, um, a multifamily dwelling with five or six. So, the building code, fire code, electrical code, all of the, what's considered the statewide building code, may have different regulations depending upon the use classification, and so we can't necessarily, I, I wasn't going to try to restate in the property maintenance code, everything that the rental permit, the short-term rental permit would need to get, I just made reference to those codes, because it really does depend upon what type of dwelling unit. Saying that, though, I thought it might be a good idea, and the committee agreed that we could add a sentence that at a minimum, and this is in the property maintenance amendment, all short-term rentals shall have a functioning smoke detector, carbon monoxide detector, and fire extinguisher in the dwelling. So we did add that one sentence to one of the requirements that in order to get your short-term rental permit, you have to demonstrate proof of that.
Thank you. This has been a, a long time in the making, and I think we've, uh, you know, struck a, a good balance between trying to protect, uh, neighborhoods and, you know, keep, you know, rental properties at, at a level where, you know, yes, you can, uh, afford a short, uh, short-term, uh, you can have a short-term rental, but there are still the opportunity for long-term rentals to, to stay at a, that are enough available that, that the part price is, is reasonable. You know, we've listened to many public comments about this, and, uh, and I'm, I'm happy with, with where we are, and that finally, we're gonna be at a point where we're, we're actually regulating them, so, comments and questions?
I do, I do have a question, uh, for Kristen. What's the parking requirement?
So this is in Section four, so all short-term rentals located in town center, which are also in a residential permit parking area, must provide one parking space per bedroom on, basically, on the lot. Well, I shouldn't say that, it has to be either on the lot where the short-term rental is located, it can be on a off-lot parking adjacent to the lot where the short-term rental is, or directly across the street, and, um, if that's occurs, if it's not on the same lot, there has to be a declaration that basically ties that off-street, that additional parking space to the short-term rental use. If the, if the short-term rental is in the town center but not in a street that has residential permit parking, you're not required to have off-street parking. And that was a suggestion from Ramsey, so I don't know if Ramsey, you want to add highlights to that?
I don't, I don't have much to say, other than I, I do think we should keep in mind that next year, we might make modifications to the parking permit areas, and I don't know how that would affect this. So if something becomes an Airbnb now with no parking, because it's not in a permitted area, and then we modify the areas, what happens then?
So if somebody gets approved under these standards, they are able to remain approved under these standards. If you change the standards and they don't comply, they're considered a lawful nonconformity.
Or, to, to follow up on that, through the special exception process, if somebody says they don't have an adjacent lot or agreement, but they would pay for the parking at a garage, is that something that could happen for that process?
They would need a variance from this section. We could, we could revise this to be that they can demonstrate that they will, and Ramsey, are they able to get a permit for that?
Again, purchase validation codes or set up some sort of monthly parking and modify the license plates with the, the garages so that there's easy access, so there is a possibility for that, and I think that anything that council agrees upon is, there's a way to work it out, as long as we're proactively communicating with these Airbnbs ahead of time, like, don't use your guest passes for weeks at a time, you know, certain things like that, but I think that would, that would be manageable with the garages.
So the question is, do we want to modify, to Brian's point, or, as is, any other comments and questions?
I would be, I would be agreeable to that, I mean, they're in town center, they already... already, they either have off-street parking. There's one particular short-term rental that has three bedrooms, but only two spaces for off-street parking. But there is parking available in the parking garages. So it seems, seems a little prohibitive.
As part of the special exception proof, they would have to demonstrate that they have that parking in the parking garage. That they'd have to show evidence, the way I would word it, would be that they'd have to show evidence that they have that lined up, or will actually pull the trigger and get that parking from the borough as part of their evidentiary proof for a special exception. So I think if the goal is to make sure that they're not on the street where it's already residential permit parking only, and that they have somewhere else to park the guests, I think we can achieve that by the amendment that Brian's talking about.
Okay. So it sounds like we're going to do a further edit.
This has to go back to the county planning commission anyway, because we've made substantial edits since the last version. So if council was comfortable with this, I can make that one edit, send it around, and we can send it to the county planning. We'll be looking for a hearing at your November meeting.
I'm good with that, everyone? All right. Thank you. Item number two, I understand that's been pulled from the agenda? 410 South High? Okay. Item number three.
Motion to direct the solicitor to attend zoning hearing on behalf of the borough for 5 North Adams.
Good evening.
Good evening. Nice to see everyone. So I think the, I think the Smart Growth Committee recommendation was to have the solicitor attend to monitor this application, not to oppose it, of just to make sure that the applicant provides all of the necessary evidence and addresses all of the floodplain issues and the variance issues. So I, I had asked the Smart Growth Committee to support the application, and, and that's what came out of that request.
There, there is a list, Kristin, that, that you have.
So, and I indicated to Mr. Nagel that we would be probably putting together some suggested conditions. And this would be that in the event zoning hearing board, this is not, this is not council taking a position to say, zoning hearing board, we think they meet their burdens and we want you to approve it. It's simply zoning hearing board, you hear the evidence, you make the legal determination whether they meet the elements for the different relief that they're seeking. And if zoning hearing board, you're inclined to grant the relief, here's conditions that borough council would suggest that you impose in the order. So these are conditions that Nate Klein and Lindsay from Nate's office, who's their floodplain expert, we did have a conversation with the applicant just to get some additional details. They had submitted plans. Lindsay had a couple of questions. We had to follow up with them yesterday afternoon. So thank you for that opportunity. And these would be some conditions that, again, I don't think the applicant would oppose, because some of these came from their own presentation. I went back to my notes from the last month's meeting. But these are just things that I thought of in terms of making sure that they fully demonstrate things that, you know, need to be demonstrated under the code and/or could potentially help the borough. So I can read through these if you want. I did not share this with Mr. Nagel because I wanted to make sure you saw them and had an opportunity to comment upon them before I sent them to him. But the first one is something that they agreed to do, which is replace, and this is part of the proposal. They're going to replace the two existing corrugated metal pipes that are located on the property and install the new larger concrete cover. The size specifications and location of the new drain pipe will be determined as part of subdivision land development. So that, obviously, all those details we worked out. Second is that they must address all the comments in the township engineer, specifically Panoni's review letter. And the last letter was dated July 9th, 2024. I do know that the applicant has resubmitted in response to that letter and that Mr. Klein and his associate are working on a response. She expects to have that done by the end of the week. We definitely want it before the hearing. So that, I'll leave that date because the next letter will just be an update of that letter. The third suggested condition is that the applicant revise their plans to demonstrate that there will be no increase in flood height within the borough during the occurrence of the base flood discharge as a result of the proposed development. This was the key point that I wanted to make sure that the applicant could, you know, the plans that they've presented, I think, needed additional information submitted to Panoni to demonstrate that they could meet that. And they have indicated that they can revise the plans to meet that point. The fourth is that, in advance of the approval of their plans, that the applicant has to inspect and analyze the condition of the entire existing storm drain pipe within the right of way of Market Street. So their, what their new drain is going to connect into is an existing drain pipe in Market Street. And the applicant was able to show us yesterday using mapping, the extent of that pipe. It's about 200 linear feet of a pipe. And we just need to make sure that where they're connecting and what they're connecting into has appropriate, is in okay condition. Not saying that it's the applicant's burden to restore it or repair it, but I think it's important to understand what that pipe looks like and whether it can continue for five more years, 10 more years, 20 more years. So part of the proposed condition would be that they would help inspect and analyze, and then there'd be a further conversation with obviously Public Works Director, Nate's office in terms of, you know, what does that inspection reveal? Is that pipe, you know, good in its current condition, or are there things that need to be done to it? And if so, there's obviously going to make cooperation and dialogue about who's, at whose expense that's happening. The next one is, and this is something that the applicant agreed to at your last meeting, applicant will be responsible for perpetual maintenance of the new drain pipe in accordance with the maintenance plan approved by the borough. And that maintenance agreement would be something that we put into a recorded document that's recorded in the chain of title, so that if the current applicant sells the property, that obligation runs with title to the property. And that's a huge plus because right now you have a pipe through that property that nobody's maintaining, really. Because it can't be. It's, it's underneath buildings and whatnot. The next is applicant shall prepare an emergency evacuation plan that must be approved by the borough as part of the land development process. I did speak with Mr. Stas yesterday, and that's something that they would be doing anyway, for their own purposes. And I mentioned that that was something, I think, that was discussed for the 250 East Market Street project, and he had no problems with working through that. The next one we also talked about was that access, all accessible, so handicapped accessible parking spaces must be located in areas on the property that are not within the floodplain. He did indicate that 70% of the parking spaces are not in a floodplain area. So on, you know, this garage that's street level or grade level, 70% of the spaces are not in floodplain, 30% of them are. We want to make sure that those that are assigned to people with handicaps are not within the areas of the floodplain. And I don't think they would have any issue with that. The next is applicant must obtain all necessary approvals from the DEP, the US Army Corps of Engineer, and FEMA in order to develop the property as proposed on the plans. Again, I think that goes without saying, they wouldn't be able to go forward without those approvals. Applicant shall be prohibited from storing any materials in the areas of the floodplain that are prohibited by the borough zoning ordinance or the building code, or could present a harm to the public health and safety in a flood event. I was not equipped today to understand exactly what your, your zoning code, your building code, or what other materials might be harmful. And I would like to have dialogue, obviously, with experts in floodplain, your public works director about if we could refine that list and really identify what is and is not acceptable to be located in areas of the floodplain. I don't think the applicant would have an issue with that, but they can obviously speak to that. The next is trash enclosure, enclosure and any other accessory structures that might be located underneath the building in the area of the floodplain must be constructed in a way as to secure them on site to prevent flotation and rotation in the event of flooding. That exact language came from a condition in the 250 East Market Street zoning approval. So that, I thought that was an appropriate condition. And the last one is applicant must adhere to all requirements in Article 5 of the borough zoning ordinance, and that is your article that deals with all of your floodplain regulations. So rather than repeat it all, that's something they're going to have to demonstrate compliance with.
Ms. Camp, Bernie Flynn.
Hi, Mr. Flynn.
Good evening, everyone. The applicant also agreed to use dark-skY lighting on this complex, the best of their, their ability, and also clean out the pipe on the other side of Market Street.
Bernie, can you, when you say clean out the pipe on the other side of Market Street, the pipe goes for quite a distance. Do we, do we want to refine that to a certain distance?
Well, Mr. Mr. Stas and Mr. Nagel said that the pipe, once it leaves their building, it passes under Market Street, and there's two big openings on the other side of Market Street that they have agreed to make sure it's unclogged and clear.
Right. That's, that's the 200 linear feet that Kristin was referring to.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And I think the dark sky initiative, Bernie, was that with the 410 South High Street? I'm not sure that conversation came.
Correct.
Yeah. Mr. Stas has agreed to also for the, uh, five, uh, the, what's it, 5 North Adam Street. They've also agreed to do it there as well.
Bernie, is that for floodplain conversation, or is that for like the general?
That's dark sky exterior lighting for the building, so it doesn't glow in the middle of the night.
Talking about a different building, I think.
Correct.
Carolyn Cametta's push and fireflies and...
It does. And it did come up at 410 South High, but we're just confirming that it also came up for, for this project.
Correct. And what Mr. Stas agreed to do was to comply with dark skies to the greatest extent possible, possibly using, there are alternative lighting options that aren't necessarily the dark skies, but they're, they're substantially similar. So that was the only caveat that I recall him mentioning.
That's absolutely correct, Mr. Nagel.
Yeah. And the language of the ordinance does give you that flexibility. So although it was not, I don't believe it was brought up in the conversation of this, if the applicant's willing to accept it, let's add it.
Okay.
And, and just so I'm clear on the cleanout, is it of the entire 200 feet? Is that 200 feet of the pipe in New Street? Okay.
Yes, that's acceptable. And all of the other conditions are acceptable as well.
Comments, questions, counsel?
I like the list. Pretty comprehensive.
Any public comments, questions? Okay. So it sounds like we're going to direct the solicitor, not in opposition, but to monitor the, the application.
And to articulate these conditions as wanting zoning hearing board to impose. That's important in your motion.
Yeah, most, most likely we'll address the conditions right up front so they know they're out there at the begin, at the outset.
Thank you. Well, on agreement, questions? Thank you.
Thank you. So that'll be on consent agenda for tomorrow night. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I did forget, under the short-term rentals, are there any public comments or questions? My apologies. Come on up.
Hi, this is Kearns, 312 West Viddle Street. As council knows, I've taken a special interest in the fire safety regulations regarding the short-term rentals, because my friend Alexandra Steele died in a short, died in a rental property in Westchester last Christmas. I did send a few suggestions to the Smart Growth Committee, some of which were accepted, and I, and I appreciate that. I want to reiterate a couple of the other points and, and have you consider adding them to the Chapter 66. And I'm pulling these from the actual national law in the UK regarding Airbnbs. And I'll just talk about a few of these. It says, "As a result of the new fire safety regulations, Airbnb and holiday rental owners are now designated as duty holders. This role requires them to take a more active role in ensuring fire safety, primarily through regular fire safety risk assessments. These assessments are critical for identifying potential fire hazards in the property and implementing necessary safety measures, thereby ensuring the safety of guests and compliance with legal standards." Talks a little bit, I mean, it goes into quite detail, I will not, on what a fire risk assessment involves. But basically, the Airbnb property owners must now perform a fire risk assessment. This critical change involves evaluating potential fire hazards within the property, including common areas and escape routes, and ensuring effective fire safety measures are in place for guest protection. Fire safety information, Airbnb hosts are now required to provide guests with clear current fire safety information. This includes guidance on emergency procedures and the location of the safety equipment, helping to ensure guests' awareness and safety. And just a little bit about the fire risk assessment. Basically, they just have to identify hazards, fire hazards, determine who's at risk, who are they renting to, especially if they rent to children, or the elderly, or the disabled. Evaluate and act, implement fire detection and warning systems, record, plan, and train, develop a clear fire safety plan for guests, and ensure their familiarity with evacuation procedures. So that's kind of what I'd still like you to, to think about, the fire risk assessments, smoke alarms, fire extinguishers, clear escape routes, and emergency information being shared with the guests they'll be renting to. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I guess I have a question. You know, Kristin, we added, or we talked about adding the, at a minimum, fire extinguisher, et cetera. I mean, this sounds like, not necessarily just applicable to short-term rentals, but to all rentals. So it sounds like perhaps the property maintenance code that we're referring to now in the, uh, in this regulation, should, we should be looking at that in terms of, are we adequately covering fire safety? So not necessarily part of this discussion, but it's a bigger topic that needs to, to be discussed in, in all rentals. And Sally's not here tonight. So I, I don't want to not have a conversation with, with her.
Other? Yeah, no, I, I, I agree 100%, especially since a lot of the fire escapes in Westchester, a lot of the older buildings have been taken down, or they're, or they're maybe not adequate or maintained. It is something that, now that we have, I think, a good amount of awareness, we, we seem to be pulling, pulling out old, old, old ordinances and looking, looking at them with some fresh eyeballs. I think that's a, that's a good, a good look at.
Being someone who survived a fire, I never really thought about it. So, Ms. Kearns, I appreciate you bringing it up. I mean, I'm used to going into a building now, you know, whether it's a rental or whatever, and I know the ways out, and I know what I need to look for. But I'm, you know, probably an exception because I, I've experienced it. So I, I think it would be a good thing for committee to, to look at with some direction and...
I think that's a good point, especially when you have, and I'm probably not going to say the right number, but 4,200 rentals, but you're only going to have 20 short-term. So it seems like a broader, to really get at the root of what you're concerned about. It should maybe be a broader conversation. So, and then it would kick in and could apply to the short-term rentals as well in the future.
That's my question. If we move forward with the short-term rentals and then modify the regulations about fire safety rules, that applies to everything, then?
We, we could make it be, yes.
Thank you.
Have to start somewhere. And the short-term rentals might be a good place to start.
I'm not sure if you were, you may have missed it when you came in, but there is going to be language in the ordinance that specifically says at a minimum.
Right. Yeah. And I, I would just think, including these couple of other things that I included, my, I'm sorry, I didn't include you. I just sent it to the Smart Growth Committee. But there were a few other points that I talked about, the fire risk assessment, the escape routes, the emergency information being shared with the guests that aren't in the minimum. But yes, they should be throughout the rentals. But as I said, you have to start somewhere. You're adopting this new ordinance and this new, this, let's not forget it again.
Yeah. And, and I will say, we, we did talk with Kristin about the, the list that you sent over. And because of, and she mentioned it a little bit earlier, because of the variance on the types of buildings that could end up being short-term rentals, it, it's a little tricky to put such concrete stipulations right into there. But going back to the, the overall safety that can be applied to the short-term rental and all rentals.
At a minimum, even with, no matter what building you're in, no matter how old it is or how new it is, their regulations may be even more stringent with a lot of the new places or the bigger places. But the older buildings... But the older buildings in Westchester, a lot of the ordinances and the regulations that apply are pretty loose. Thank you.
So do we want to proactively just, where do we want to put this? Smart Growth or Public Safety? What are you thinking?
I'll take it under Public Safety if you want. Excuse me, under Public Works if you want. Because this is Bernie, because it has to do with a lot of the buildings that are in the town, if you want me to handle it.
All right, so I think Lisa, I'm sorry? It's a codes issue.
But it would be good to get feedback from Fire Department.
So maybe we start with the conversation in Public Safety with a recommendation, and then if we have to move it to Smart Growth for code updates or something, I don't know. I'm on both committees, so I'm agnostic to the final decision. Okay, so Dana, next month, Public Safety. Thank you.
Okay, so we're still with the short-term rental. We are agreeing to update the edits for review by council, correct? Yep, okay. Any more on Smart Growth?
Yes, we got a little bit more. Motion to approve Harb applications. So there was a lot of backlog with Harb, and they met, and they have a variety of approvals, and we recommend to move forward with their approvals to consent. Any questions?
Nope.
Any comments from those in attendance here? All right, we'll put that on consent. And then, number five, motion to direct the planning commission to review borough ordinances as they pertain to building owner-occupied dwellings. So I brought this to Smart Growth last week with the idea that, you know, we've, we've got a lot of apartment buildings, large apartment buildings going up. Rentals, not condos, just rentals, adding, as Brian, you mentioned, 1,000 units over the next however many couple of years. And the question really has come up, and in different ways, is, you know, how do we, what are we doing that in our ordinances, in our zoning, in our what-have-you to make it more, that it's more of an incentive to build these large-scale apartment complexes versus homes for people? You know, that they can buy and owner-occupied residences. So I'm going to go next week. Kristen also is going to go. Sally's going to go. We're going to go to the planning commission, as long as no one's completely opposed to this, to really talk through the levers that we have as counsel to create or to facilitate the ability for builders to want to build homes in our community versus apartments. We're going to have plenty of apartments. X has got plenty of apartments. Everybody's building apartments. They're everywhere. Let's try to get some homes built in here so that our ratio shifts a little bit. So that's the plan. That's the desire.
No, I think that's a good idea. I think the one item I would suggest, and I've said it before, is looking at our current lot size requirement, and how if we want to have affordable housing, maybe looking at reducing that lot size.
We'll put that on the list to discuss, and I think Kristen had a wealth of, like, ideas that came out of her head during the committee meeting. I don't know if you want to share some of them while we're here, just with these guys, or do you want to take it to the commission first? And where you're allowing multifamily, and whether you want to continue to allow them, and what density you want to allow them at. Maybe you establish a maximum lot size. You know, you can only build a multifamily, but it can only be on a lot size of three acres. I mean, I'm just making a number up, but right now there is no maximum lot size. So you can buy seven, eight, nine lots, consolidate them, and build, you know. And the other thing is your height option overlay districts. You're allowing a building to go to 75 feet, and the height option overlay of 75 feet, maybe. And that clearly is encouraging multifamily of a 75-feet-tall building. So it's a lot of zoning, I think.
So I guess a question I have, is this to prevent higher density? Or is it to build, you know, community? What's the intent?
My intent is for community. To, we are skewing more and more transient community versus owner-occupied homes in our community. We have been for years. If you go back to the comprehensive plan from, what was it, 2016 when it was written, we were already like 50% or 60%, and they already were saying we need to start looking at how we can increase the owner-occupied ratio, if you will, in our community. And it's really, it's that, not as much density, but just to give people opportunities to own their homes. There tends to be more pride when there's homeownership versus renting, and all of those things that we want to keep our community special and the way it is. I do, I think I said this at Smart Growth, but you cannot regulate whether somebody can own or lease a property. Like, that's not something that you're allowed to do. But you can, as you mentioned, you know, you're more likely, you're going to rent a multifamily, right? So there's going to be, it comes into uses that are allowed, and to encourage uses where it's more likely that you're going to have an owner-occupied structure or residence.
Do you want to not villainize renters? I think there are absolutely wonderful people in our borough who are renters, and I think there is a lot of pride in some of the communities that have been built around rental properties. I think I'm just asking to frame the language a little bit differently, to respect the people who are in our community, who are a very important part of our community. There are some beautiful rental properties that have done immense things for our landscape, our burrowscape. And there are more coming that are beautifying our area. They are not a detriment. I am not saying we shouldn't be pushing for more single-family homes, but I am saying, can we please take a step back and recognize all the good that is being done by adding some of these properties? I don't love all the properties that have come, but some of them are phenomenal.
Well, I want to make sure you're not putting words in my mouth by saying that I'm vilifying renters. I rented for quite a long time. I did not buy in the borough until my early 40s. So I understand that there is a place for renting in the borough especially. So I hope that you don't put words in my mouth saying that I'm vilifying renters. But what I am saying is, from a ratio standpoint, we are oversaturated in rentals. We have plenty. And I'm not asking for necessarily even single-family homes. I'm asking for homes, things that people can buy and own and have that. There's a ton of people out there that want to be able to afford a place and buy a place in the borough, and they can't. And right now, what we've been doing is adding rentals, which, yes, is fine. There are people that want to rent too. But we're also, again, tilting the scale with the ratio of renters to those that have the opportunity to own a home, that want to own a home here in the borough. So again, I don't really appreciate the use of vilification and applying it to the words that I said. But I do think that there's an opportunity to tip the scale and move the ratio a bit more to more owner-occupied homes. And again, it doesn't have to be single-family, but I'm looking for things that you can buy.
So Kristen, can I ask, condominiums, are they, I mean, you could have condominiums in any of these large multifamily buildings. I mean, I assume that's a developer financial issue as opposed to anything else, but our zoning code doesn't.
That's a form of ownership. Yeah, it doesn't. But if they were going to, if, for example, any of the apartment buildings were coming in as condos, that would be brought out during the approval process.
I was just wondering if there's a reason why, you know, there are so many rentals as opposed to condos. I mean, you know, Turk Street, the project over there, I mean, they're back from the 80s, early 90s now, but both very nice things. They're not, you know, eight-story buildings or anything, but, you know, it's still their owner-occupied.
Tom West did send me an article or two. One of the reasons is that there is a funding component for the builders for condos versus renting. Builders make their money back much faster with rentals than they do with selling condos. It's a cash flow thing. So that's one of a few complexities there, but.
Well, they probably also make a lot more money on an eight-story building with 100 units as opposed to, you know, 10 single-family. Other comments, questions? Public comment or question? Okay, so looks like we're going to, we have a motion that we'll put on consent to direct planning commission to review the borough ordinances. Okay, thank you. Finance and revenue.
Yes, so item one here is a discussion about special fees, event application calculation. And basically, what we want to do is make sure that these fees are going to be upfront and transparent for anyone that's having a special event moving forward. And that would incorporate the Public Works and Police Department service and equipment. It also refunds a portion of those fees through special event parking for certain larger events that take place in town center. So Barb went over this at our finance committee meeting, and these are the staff recommendations.
Any comments or questions?
I think, actually, we did an exercise for item two, and I thought it was kind of an interesting exercise. And, oh, Barbara's here too. But I liked the exercise because the idea, again, behind this is so that we have a fair fee, that we don't need people to keep coming to us and asking us for a break. Like, because it's ad hoc, we're not keeping track well, we don't know if, you know, these people should be getting a break and these people shouldn't be. So we want to have something that's fair and flat and covers our costs, and that we can charge with integrity and clarity, and again, don't have to negotiate every time they go out there. One thing that I liked about this was when we did this chili cook-off, we took what Furin's paid last year, or like the fee structure and what we ended up paying, they paid, or not Furin's, but the chili cook-off team, the Rotary Club, paid last year with regards to, like, how it was structured. And we compared it to the structure that we're looking to move forward. And we said, we did apples to apples of what this year's components would be. The number of police officers and things like that. And actually, if we'd have used, if we used last year with all the breaks and everything, it actually was pretty equivalent to what we'd like to approve this year, that we would not give any breaks, but it's the fair and flat fee. Does that make sense? Did I make sense when I?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And you were on the email, so it makes sense to you. But so that's one of the reasons why I think we've come up with a good structure, that Barbara's come up with a good structure, because it seems like it's covering our costs and giving the right fee to those that are holding these different events. That's just my thought process. But Barbara, if you want to get more details about how you got to the calculations, too.
Bill, if you could go to that first slide, please. So.
Yeah, that one.
So we took a look at all of the events that we have within the borough, and we started with some baseline assumptions. The first one being, is there a minimum number of employees that are needed for these events? And after speaking with the Police Department, we realized that that is not applicable because it's dependent on safety issues. We also looked at some of the events that we have had in the past have kind of been all over the place with credits for parking revenue. Some events were charging $10, some $20 in the garages. Some people were getting 50% discounts, some were getting full discounts. So this was my attempt to take a look at the cost and try to make it easier for applicants so that they're not coming forward and asking for all these breaks and different people, you know, getting different things. So what I did first was I looked at 2023 salaries, and in the majority of the events, there's a supervisor and a line staff. So for the Police Department, we have a sergeant and an officer. And then for Public Works, we have the supervisor and the employee. And after going through what the salaries were, taking account for FICA and pension costs, we came up with a total salary and benefits. We divided that number by 2,080 and then put a 1.5 factor on it because these events are all being paid at an overtime premium. And we came up with a blended rate. If you go to the last column there, you'll see that for the Police Department, we came up with a blended rate between the supervisor and line staff of $129 an hour, which is down from the current rate of $180 an hour. And then for Public Works, it's $69 an hour, which is slightly above the current rate of $55 an hour.
Thank you, Barb. Any questions, I guess?
Yeah, just one question. I mean, so that's, these were 2023 rates, obviously, you know, they're increases every year. So will we look at the number every couple of years?
Yeah, that is one of the recommendations, that we would review this each year and then make any changes as necessary.
I just have one question, and I do understand your analysis here, but how do we end on the $10 for parking for the events?
So that was an agreement that I had with Mr. Metric and with Ramsey. It was a decision that we made when we sat down to review this, that we would charge an across-the-board fee of $10. Because again, it was just an attempt to kind of summarize all of this so that each event is being treated relatively the same, and we came up with a $10 fee.
I'm not going to disagree. I thought that counsel had agreed on $10. I know that this has been batted back and forth. I don't know what the final answer was, because a lot of this is discussed in Public Safety, so I apologize. You know, ultimately, I think we all agree that it's your decision. I know that in the past, it's been 10 and 20 for the Christmas parade, but I don't have a problem with whatever counsel determines. I just, you know. I think we did say, you know, we wanted to get your recommendation. Like, so as opposed to just saying whatever we want, like, what's your recommendation? 10 seems manageable for the next year because this is a new situation. I will say that one of the things I would like to do is start charging for the parking lots and having a parking officer available to check the lots so you can do reservations for the garages, and you can also, I think, with our new software, reserve spaces in the lots so we could recoup more expenses that way, or more revenue that way. So that's an opportunity for next year, so maybe we make more money. And then we look at it. I don't want to ever do anything that's going to stifle people from visiting the borough for these events, but I also do know that we draw a lot of people in. I go to a lot of concerts, and I've paid between, you know, 10 and $50 to park. So, you know, it really depends on ultimately what everyone else says. I think 10's a good starting point. I think 20 made sense for the Christmas parade because we don't make a lot, because most people come in and park before the parade starts. So I think that was why 20 dollars made sense. But again, I think 10's a fine starting point. I don't know if everyone feels like that's too low. Typically, a lot of these events are on Sundays, so it's free parking anyway, so that's more than we would make on a Sunday.
Mr. Metric, you look like you had a, you were going to make a comment. Okay. Other questions, comments?
Can you go two slides ahead, I think?
Bill, would you mind?
Bill? Can you go two slides ahead?
This is the next topic on the agenda. This is for the chili cook-off. They had come before the finance committee for a waiver.
I'm asking to look at this for the conversation we're having now.
I'm sorry.
I saw it, and I just.
So this is what I was alluding to earlier when I was saying, I was saying, if, if, based off of how we charged them last year, if, which was a different number of police officers and cars and things, you know, if we, if they came to us this year with the eight police officers and four public works and all of that, which they're coming to us this year with, we would be charging them $10,256 using last year's calculations. And that includes the breaks that we gave them and things like that for, for parking and things. If you compare it to what Barb's presenting now, actually, with no breaks, because we wouldn't give anybody breaks anymore because they would just pay our fees, it's $10,208. Last year, what they did pay was $7,500 or something like that.
But what if we charged $20 flat for all of these events and then gave, subsidized the events after the fact consistently? That's where I'm going.
I understand, I understand your point. But I think to Ramsey's overall point, a lot of these events take place on a Sunday, with the exception of the Halloween parade or the Christmas parade. And I think, I think $10 is reasonable for starting now, and then maybe we could evaluate it in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with also, if we want to do $20 for Christmas parade and $10 for everything else, too. If that's. $20 for Christmas parade and then $10 for everything else. I'd be okay with that, too, if we think that that makes sense.
I'm fine with that. This is Bernie.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to, if we want to do that, then I think that, that makes sense. I agree.
Does it? Is the draw to the Christmas parade that much higher? Tell me, I'm asking.
It is.
I would say.
It is.
Do we have?
The Christmas parade, they're coming. We have 45,000 people, one year, 35,000 the next. Yes, it is that much of a draw.
I'm not saying, is the Christmas parade a draw? I'm saying, are the other events, is the chili cook-up, is Restaurant Festival not a draw?
I don't think the attendance to either of those events is as high as it is for the, I mean, you cannot walk, you cannot move this, on the streets, all of the streets in downtown during the Christmas parade. For Restaurant Festival, it's Gay Street, right, that's blocked. But for the Christmas, my experience in the last five, 10 years is, you know, we're packed on those streets like sardines. But we're packed on the sidewalks and not in the street, whereas the Restaurant Festival, we're.
Well, the parade goes down all the streets.
Right, but we're not in the street. I'm just, like, these are, these are not real numbers. Do we have any numbers that are real numbers?
I'm sure we could get them from Katie.
So, I mean, I think the point is, I mean, from my perspective, as long as we're covering our costs, and it's $10, I'd be fine with, with $10. I just don't want to, you know, we want people to be here and enjoy the town. I don't, it's not a moneymaker for one event. So as long as we're covering our costs, I'm good with, with that. Does $10 cover, help cover our costs?
I think you're thinking about the parking fee incorrectly. The, the costs of running the, providing police and public works support to event is fixed, and it's in that top-line charge there. Crediting a portion of the special event parking fee back to, that's a subsidy to the organization running the event.
Yeah, it's to help offset their costs. So if we, if we charged more for parking, we could help offset their costs more. But.
It doesn't make us much.
Cost, we just don't share any of the parking revenue.
Yeah, because I, I mean, for consistency's sake, right, it's, in my humble opinion, it's all or none. Like, you can't decide that you do it for one event and not for another.
I'm very much in favor of a single flat fee for all events, because you're going to sit up here and, I think the intent of all this was to stop the bargaining that happens at public meetings. Like, hey, we want our fees reduced a little bit. If you make it the same for everybody, then that puts you in a much more easy position to defend. And I do think there's a nexus, though. Getting back to my point, I don't think we should keep all the special event parking fee revenue, because the special event fee's happening, and people are coming to our town who wouldn't otherwise come because they want to see the special event. So splitting the revenue makes some sense from a policy perspective. And you guys are in charge of the policy. But I think making it a 10 and splitting it with all the special event holders is a good, is a good move.
Well, and that's what's here, right? I mean, it's 10 and the 50%. Yeah.
That was all I was trying to bring up, was like, I want to encourage people to have these events here, and I, I also want consistency. So those are my two goals. If, if it needs to be 20 to make that happen, that was my only reason to move to 20. If it doesn't need to be 20, if we can do it at 10 and make it still work, then yeah, let's, let's do that.
Sounds like we're good for 10.
Can I just mention one thing? I just want to say this on the record, because I know people that are going to have special event, events here will ask this, but there are parking costs associated that Barb couldn't put in here because, you know, it depends on where the event is. So we do charge posting fees.
I have that on number three.
Okay, so I just wanted to be clear that that would be an additional cost that would show up in there depending on where the event is taking place. Because I don't want anyone to be surprised watching this tape back later.
And again, this was an attempt to kind of make it a lot easier so that these questions don't come up. Because when I went through and did this calculation, it was very difficult for me to even go through all of the research and try to figure out where a lot of this was put into writing. So this was our attempt to memorialize it and make it easier for everybody.
So I'm just going to say this. If we go forward with this, we are no longer approving anybody for weird kickbacks after they threw an event.
Correct.
Nobody.
That's right.
Okay.
I'm on board.
Here's my only thing.
Uh-oh.
When the borough throws an event, and we don't pay these fees, how do we, how do we explain that?
Yeah, the salaries are internal.
But let me add another thing. At the Westchester Community Campus Committee meeting, we started the conversation that maybe in certain cases, because guess who else is not paying fees? Let's, let's put the borough aside that we need to pay ourselves. Let's, let's not pay. We're, we're trying to, apparently, in the past, at one point, the university did pay some fees at some point. I don't know what they were. I don't know. But there's, there's a little bit of an openness to start this conversation, because, like, homecoming, like, the Josh Police Chief said last week, that apparently it's like $15,000 worth of.
Eighteen.
Yeah, it's, it's more, it's more than the chili cook-off for, for police officers. And that's just borough police officers. That doesn't even include state troopers that come out for, like, homecoming and things like that. So this is another, you know, once we can get standardized and, and transparent about our costs, we can also have conversations there. So that's, that's something that we're hoping to continue to do.
Does the university apply for special events? Do they go through the same process? Why not?
Because their event technically is on their property. It's on the campus. But then it spills out into all the off-campus housing, the bars and restaurants, right?
So somebody's got to figure it out. I mean, we don't have a vehicle to charge them anything at this point.
Well, I think from the, the Westchester Community Campus Committee meeting, there was an openness of understanding that events like homecoming have sincere impacts to the borough, not just on campus. So we're going to see how far that conversation goes. But, but that's, that, just because the event is on campus, the, the housing, the, it was brought up, that it, like, the campus is dry. So all of their, their fraternity, sorority, which you can't really have, but, you know, those houses are all in the borough, unlike other schools. So, so they're pushing that activity, that celebratory activity into our borough, and thus we need that additional protection for their students, not just for borough residents, but for all the students, for everyone that's living there. So, so, so that's kind of the, I would think, the most, the easiest one for us to agree upon with regards to, to impacts. And then from there, we can see if there are other, other events like that. And there might not be, but homecoming is a, it's a big one, you know, it's a.
Mr. President, I just want to call a point of order. If we could get back on topic here, in discussing these fees, would I hear you understand we could probably take a look at that later and hopefully get more money from Westchester? I'm not hopeful. But I, I think we need to make a decision here as far as, again, going back to the transparency. I think we could all agree that the police and the public works numbers are, look good. Parking, are we going to set that standard at $10 then across the board? Are we going to go $10 and then $20 for the Christmas parade? And that, that's something we need to decide.
I think I heard 10.
Yeah, can I ask, may I ask one question? So what is the hourly rate in the garage right now, Ramsey? $1.50. So, and most of these events are, what, like, four or five hours? Maybe the people stick around for a couple extra? It seems like 10 is the number we're going to land on. I mean, I feel very comfortable with that number.
Any other questions or comments? Public comments or questions? So is this a motion to approve a new rate table? It says discuss, so I'm not sure what the next up is, would be to publish a new rate schedule for special events that will come back to committee next month for approval? I'm not sure what the action item here is. We've discussed it. We've agreed to 10.
So it seems like we have, we have consensus around what has been presented. So if someone wants to move something to the consensus agenda, which would be a motion to approve the special.
I'd like to make a motion to approve it to the consent agenda tomorrow.
Not with consent.
Does everyone consent to that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Are we good? Okay. Discuss waiving the special event fees for chili cook-off.
So I put together a calculation that Nicole had spoken about a few minutes ago, comparing the rates that are currently in effect versus if we use the new proposed rates for this event. And with the rates that are in, that are in effect now, that their cost would be $10,256. I do want to say that this is very preliminary and very estimated at this point in time. The one number that I do know that is correct is the number of police officers, but the staffing for public works and the, the parking revenue and all that could be subject to change. So that, and if we charge them the new rate at the proposed rates of this evening, it would be $10,208. So relatively close. And their ask was, you know, whatever council could give them as, as a, a reduction of these fees, since they are a not-for-profit. And they got the application in in August, and the event is in October. So they're looking for some help.
Comments from the finance committee?
I mean, when, when I look at this, and we look at these numbers, these new numbers now, I think it's fair that we're presenting these new updated numbers. They'll probably be approved tomorrow, and I have no issue with those, those changes being made.
So what are, what are we waiving?
So, so technically, if we approve what we just talked about tomorrow, then we would not waive anything. We would just charge them based off of the new rates, which is actually an improvement to what they would have been charged using last year's rates.
Right. And it looks like they'd save about a little over two grand, more than that, close to three grand. So it is essentially a savings at the end of the day.
Any questions, comments? Question, counsel? Public comments or questions?
Can I ask how the parking fee thing is going to work?
I'm sorry, ask the question again?
All right. So they come in, they say they're going to do this event. When are they being charged, and when are they?
We can program the garage to start charging the special event fee and stop charging the special event fee at certain times a day. So there's actually no, no change in the management of the garages, except we put a sign up that says special events from this time to this time. And when that person exits the garage, they pay the special event fee if they were in the garage during, they entered the garage during that special event window. Then we get the report, the monthly report from Impark. It tells us the exact revenue in both garages, and then we reconcile the invoice back to the special event applicant.
At what point does this applicant pay money?
It's usually 30 to 45 days after the event.
So they.
That's when we expect to be paid.
That's when they're supposed to pay. So they will see that refund before they're being billed. I just want to clarify that, mostly for myself. So thank you.
Okay, so going to consent agenda would be to apply the, the new special fees event for the chili cook-off. Have consent?
Yes. Item three, motion to sell Ford Focus Building and Housing Vehicle. It's no longer viable. That was a three, nothing committee recommendation.
Comments or questions? Public comments or questions? All right, move to consent.
Item four, motion to approve 2025 minimum municipal obligation calculation for the uniform and non-uniform pension plans.
Comments?
So we did receive good news on these numbers. The police pension is, the MMO is being reduced by over $400,000. So we're at 1.3 million. And then the non-union is going down $26,000. So good news for 2025.
What drives those, the M L down?
I'm sorry?
What drives them down? What's the?
There's a lot of different factors. There's, there's salaries, there's amortization rates that are dropping off in the valuation reports that help drive some of these numbers. So.
Market return.
Yeah.
Market return. And then what was mentioned is, when we went to a new pension provider, we reduced fees and expenses, too. So that, that helps.
Excellent. Comments, questions? Public comments, questions? Okay, we'll move that to consent agenda.
And then finally, motion to approve purchasing request, Usalco, $12,540. That's for phosphorus removal. Darlington Equipment Company, $46,995. That's RBC Gears. Darlington Equipment Company for $22,475. That's block bearings for the gears. And Watch Keep, $17,259. And these were all approved, three, nothing.
Comments or questions? Any public comments or questions? Okay, looks like we have motion to move that to consent. Is there any other business?
Daryl Cook, South One Street. How many of the new structures would qualify for short-term rentals? Thank you.
None, right? You're talking about the MDUs? None. The way we have the, the ordinance written.
Okay, hearing no other business, we are adjourned at 8 o'clock on the dot. Thank you.